On this meeting in order, at the record show that all commissioners are present. Please stand to present their allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your next canvas to certify the election returns from November the eighth, 2016?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
We'll let you talk.
The official results is the first report and the canvas totals on the right-hand column. Those numbers have not been added to the total votes on that report, but they will be added to it eventually, going according to the standard. So if you want to know a particular race, for example, Republican Party, strength party voters, there's an additional 21 votes that needs to be added to the total. So that is the true number. The second report is a precinct by precinct report, which somebody had requested, so I've provided one to each one of them. In addition to that, I would like to answer some of the questions that have been asked of myself, and I have put together a report which I think would help everyone understand how this goes. The first thing I want to cover is the fact that we have a chart up here, which is the overall estimates from 2012 to 2016, and you can see that the 2016 number is way above anything we've ever had. So the 2012 is the last presidential, the 14th, of course, when it's a regular election, and then the 2016, which is the presidential, and the desk for release. With the additional canvas votes, we have hit over 14,000 votes in this election. My report talks about, a little bit about, the kind of elections we've done, a total of 15 elections this year. My office has handled one Republican and one Democrat primary, one Democrat and one Republican runoff, and a general election. We've also done elections for two other entities, and those were two early votings for a total of seven election day events. For example, in the primary, a lot of these elections, the state requires that we do the early voting for them. We have no choice. We have to do the preliminary part. They, however, have to conduct their own elections on election day. So that still means we have to make ourselves available, we still have to have our equipment available, and our services available to those entities. That's broken down there, and I also broke it down by which ones Malburne County pays for. To give you an idea, we pay for one election, and we pay for five early voting elections. In the general election, which is specific to the issue at hand from canvassing, we're dealing with a total of 27,667 registered voters, 13,945 the uncanned votes, the ballots that were passed. We had one early voting site, and we had 17 election day polling sites. The number of election clerks that were used for early voting were 13, and the number of election judges and clerks on election day were 95. The number of hours worked by election workers were 2,913. None of these figures, the 13, 95, or the 2,913, is through the staff from the county clerk service. The additional work hours, besides your regular work by my staff, was 833. And for somebody that don't know, our work began in July for this general election. Our first mail-out had to be ready by September 24th, which was in military, and in July we started training over everything from the primaries that qualified for the ballot and the general. The reason I put the statement of residence number up here is to make you aware that during early voting, during election day, a lot of voters' information is not the current information that is showing up on our list. They're required, the list is already marked for us, it tells us who's required to execute a statement of residence which updates their information. For this particular election, we did 401 of those statement of residence in early voting, and we did 105. Those 506 were turned over to the voter registration office for corrections to the voter list. The ballot board served three functions. We know it as a ballot board, but before election day, it is known as a signature verification committee. They met on Monday, November 7, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., and they qualified 1,107 ballots that had been received at that point. They also met on Tuesday, September 8, beginning at 8:00 a.m., and worked till 1:30 a.m. the next morning, and they handled approximately 1,827 ballots. The second meeting was on Monday, 11/14, which was the deadline for any out-of-the-country ballots to come in and still be counted. Those were a total of 17, and they processed those. Our third meeting was on Tuesday, November 15. By this time, we had received back the 224 provisional ballots that were passed in the general election, in early voting and in general election. We had a total of 224 provisionals. They qualified those, they had questions on 68 of them, which were returned to the VR on 11/16. They met again by that evening, and they accepted 68 ballots that were taken to the VR for clarification. They had questions on some of the reasons that people were using to vote provisional. The number of provisional ballots accepted in total were 101. The number of provisional ballots that were rejected were 123. In early voting, we had 43 of those provisional ballots. On election day, we had 187 of those provisional ballots. There were, if you notice, this number's going to be off by two or three. In election day, we found that some of the election judges, I guess, ran out of the provisional ballot, which is emerald, which is green. They used white ones, and sometimes they had two ballots in each of those envelopes which accounted for the difference in the numbers. But 224 did go to VR for clarification. The number of regular ballots processed were 1,731. Now, we have been ordered to do a manual count on November the ninth. And when I say mandated, it's mandated by the Secretary of State. They do this on anyone that has electronic equipment, and it's just a shot of the wheel. It's randomly done, counties, we have not had one for a year and a half. But it happened that we were there. This time, we had to do a manual count of precincts 22, 24, and 43, which is also used to describe the precincts. We do not pick the precincts that we manually count. And that is done to check the accuracy of the electronic equipment that we have. That was completed by the board on Friday, November 18, and the accuracy confirmed that the election day results were the same in those precincts when the latter came. On election day, the early voting results were available at 7:08 p.m. Election day results available were at 10:17 p.m. The first ballot box of election day, election day ballot box, was brought in at 7:58 p.m., and the last one was brought in at 9:35 p.m. Now, there was some misconception going around, I had a Facebook post, that somebody was confused about whether or not our numbers were on the Secretary of State's website. The Secretary of State does not want you changing numbers once you enter the numbers. They prefer that you enter final numbers only. The reason that happens is that if we need to go back in to correct something, first, they have to know why, second, they have to authorize it, and third, they have to give you the password in order for you to get in there and change it. And they're not going to allow you to change it just because you missed typed the number, unless it's a new address. They just prefer that you use your final numbers when you're ready. These are questions that some visitors to our office asked about, how many people actually voted using the curpsite? We had approximately 200, and the way we can tell that is that this, where the people sign in, workers were marking curpsites. This was a real interesting one. There was a lot of emphasis placed on this election, that we actually explained the additional items that could be used for voter ID purposes, and the execution of affidavits. We only had 24 of those people actually using, which means the majority of the people had the proper ID that they needed to vote. 14 of those were learning voting, and 10 were on election day. So I think we are required to send all of those to the state, and we have sent them. I don't know what they plan to do with them. There might be some questions on some of them, depending on what they ask, but that will come from the Secretary of State, it will not come from my office in terms of the questions. In addition to that, we had a daily open records request that we had to prepare every day as soon as the voters had gotten into voting that day. Those were about 10, mainly those came from the campaigns, especially in the district 22. We were getting those requests from several places and the same information. I did conduct six election worker trainings during the primary and this election. Any questions so far?
Some requests for open records for them. Any question?
Yes, sir. I have the work order request. The equipment that we use is something that I hope we need to look at. We only have, we used 17 of our 23 auto marks, we used 20 out of our 23 M100s, 23 out of the 24 four books that we have. We used approximately 200 booths, those are the portable booths that go out to all the polling rotations. We have portable handy cap racks, which three were deployed, electrical reels and things that we have to have in order to get the equipment running. Those were about 40 that we used. We used approximately 45 ballot boxes. These are the metal ballot boxes, we're still using those to transport ballots back to the courthouse. We have tables and chairs that we used, approximately 10, and we used approximately 115 election signs of all different kinds that are required to be at the podium.
Janie, could you, next time, include one more sign? Because a lot of people were coming in, I say precinct 10 on the site. Put it on the front.
We're going to get some printed, because we don't have any that just have an arrow, and that arrow has to face both ways.
And they would come in, and they would have to send them out.
Right. I will address the issue of the precincts in further ado. As you know, some of the court members that appear, back in May of 2015, the Elections Committee made a recommendation to the Commissioners Court, a copy of which I have attached, and I wanted to let you all know what the status of that, because we were asked to do certain things. Number three, which was the recommended payment piece for election judges and clerks, the court took care of that in November, which was the first election after 2015, and the salary of the clerks was raised to $10 for the clerks and $50 for the election judges. And $50 is just one time, the clerks is $10 per hour. Number four, on the list of recommendations, I believe was, has been addressed slowly, but more than ever at this general election, and I outlined the things that were done. There's a list there. Also, I've included a copy of the website, which we took full use of this time. There's a copy there of everything that was being posted on the website, in addition to the election numbers, as they will become available. And then I'll close with my recommendation, which goes back to the recommendation to the committee, number one or two have not been addressed so far. It is my recommendation that we consider seriously, the court consider seriously, addressing the issue of redistricting, the precincts, and that we keep in mind the precinct lines for the city, the school, and the hospital, try to make it a concentrated effort to keep the precincts as much as possible the same for countywide voting, which is where we need to be. We need to go to countywide polling locations. We should be able to walk in anywhere, and any voter should be able to vote in any election in the same precinct that they've gone to, you know, for several years. And I know that it's a legal issue, but the court can take and address that issue in 2017, which is an odd number of years, which is the only time that the court has an opportunity to address some of those questions.
When you say 2017, I mean, we could begin to address it as soon as, yeah.
Yes, you could start the hiring process, because it does take somebody that has redistricting. It has to be a legal person. You have to, there are certain guidelines and everything that has to be met. So what has happened in the past is that first, legal counsel is hired to address the redistricting issues, and then the issue will be court come into play, and that person takes and addresses those issues.
Last, can we get the redistricting, Mr. Rios out of San Antonio was involved in that?
Yes, sir.
So we need to go out for our case.
He's done it several years, and basically stays the same.
And he's also worked for the city, so he's familiar with what's on our city. I don't know if he's available or not.
Well, one of the issues, like what you just said right now, is that our city and our county lines within the city limits are not necessarily the same, and we have people that are really, really confused.
I think the court has an opportunity to set the groundwork here, because in looking at redistricting, and my experience with redistricting, and I've had several years of doing it, is that you have to start with the county. You have to start with the county, and then overlay the city boundaries, and then the school districts, and we have two school districts, two school districts within the county lines. It seems to me that the county has an opportunity to set the rules as to how we do that, and then you bring in the city, the school, and the hospital to try to fit in to what's on the table.
We tried, remember? I mean, you, you four years ago, or whatever.
I've had two meetings with city officials. This time around, I can tell you that as soon as the school district election was over, I sat down with the city attorney, with the city secretary at the time, and the hospital person, and the school district person, and they were very much in line with the precincts that we were using at the time. In fact, I still have that chart, where we have the common areas, there's a lot of common areas already in the precinct numbers, it's just we've kind of resolved it once.
Yeah, like I said, I know there'd be precinct one and two up on top of the hill going until you go past. Those lines are nowhere close, once you get, once you're in a bit of confusion.
If we were to bring up the issue and start involving everyone from the beginning, I think that they would see a benefit to doing this. I do most of their elections now, both school districts, which is where, you know, I think that common thread comes in, and if we just, everybody sit down and try to address the issues that are particularly interesting.
But that would involve you, I mean, not us, you know, I mean, you don't need any authority from us, you just, you could go do it, right?
Not redistricting.
No, we're beginning to process.
We would need someone from the court to be designated to address the issue with redistricting. I don't have the authority that the court have, and the court is the one that ultimately decides on which plan on redistricting to accept, so.
But what we have now, you could begin the process of showing them what we have, and look, this is what we have, if we go to change it.
And we've done that, we had our first meeting in May, and I'd like for that to move forward from there. It's just I want to make the court aware that this is something that you can only adjust in an odd number of years, so we don't want that in 2017.
So we need to get somebody hired and onboard to start this process.
Would combining all elections to one date be a viable option? The school, the city, the hospital, and the county?
The state is moving to that, because they're the only ones that can mandate them to move, and I know that in a school district races, they've already told them, you need to align yourself either with a city or a county election, which is where cost comes in, they've aligned themselves with the county. But the school district here has aligned itself with the city elections. So I think we need to be talking to the city and see if we can get them closer to doing it this way. The hospital's not going to be a column. The hospital already knows that, I have a meeting in Austin next week, and this is one of the issues that's going to be discussed. Most of those directives come from the state, and they put it as a change into the election code, and they give them like at least a year to move. And so they give them a deadline by which they need to decide whether to align themselves with city or county. And now that they've done it to two, now they're down to two, and you align yourself down there, I don't know what will happen if we ask them to align themselves to one, but it's certainly an option.
Well, either way, I mean.
Yeah, I'll put something in. I think the first step we should take is go for our case board. That's the first step, I'll put that in the decision.
My last, well, it won't be my last, if it helps, and I'll make a quick mention when I come back. The other thing that I would like to see is, I don't know where the court went with county grant administrators position. I would like the court to start authorizing this person to look for funding. Our equipment is going to have to be in the culture soon, especially if we're moving to countywide polling sites, we need to make sure that our equipment's able to transmit and communicate with each polling place. So it all starts with polling places, it all starts with the differences, that we need to start there, because everything else from there will be to address the issue of the polling places.
I think we already have Carl and Debbie with some of the grants. All we have to do is just make sure that we.
Yeah, they come across all the time in available funding. That is around the other things that I'm going to cover with Secretary of Customs next week. They are more like a direct line to know if this money is available, which is where I've been getting my money, from the last three. I've had three or four grants already from them to buy some of this equipment that we have right now. So they should know if something is going to be coming down the pipe.
And if you do know, Janie, let us know, so we can ask Debbie to look into it.
Right.
Very good.
Yes. I just didn't remember, did you hire someone?
Yeah, she's our worker, we hired her full-time.
Now, the last question, I mean, the last thing I want to discuss is, I have not had official notice of a recon. It was dependent on this canvassing date. If and should anyone wish to make a recon petition, the last day would be Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. November 23rd, this is the court line.
But is it, that's not going to affect anything that we do, right?
No. We have to actually canvass in order for them to have the right to request any.
Thank you, Janie.
Good job.
Thank you.
Can I get a second this one right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's the motion, and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. All right, next, we have item five, discuss possible action regarding the request to pay out of cycle purchase 48067, R1 to Southwest Tires.
Judge, we had some issues here with Southwest Tires back in October. We had placed this order, and we had an appeal, but we did not receive the tires, so we didn't pay them back in October. In November, this past meeting, we received the tires, but we did not have an invoice in place. We've got an invoice now, it's signed and ready to go. So I will make the motion, pay out of cycle for the purchase of tires to Southwest Texas, Southwest Tires.
There's a motion, second, and it's discussion. Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, discuss possible action regarding correction to a copier contract for the county agents' office, which was approved on November 14, 2016, Commissioners Court. The contract should have been for offices of Justice District Number One and Number Four instead of county agents' offices.
Move.
There's a motion, second, and a discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Now, let's go to the addendum. On the addendum, number one, discuss possible action regarding the national ITA participants' agreements.
Motion to become participants.
There's a motion, and a second. Second, and a discussion. And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, we have item two, discuss possible action regarding out-of-cycle payment for DWI 01 grant refunds.
Move.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item three, discusses possible action regarding risk control reimbursement 2016.
Move.
Move.
What is it?
Matt?
We don't have a second here.
Question. Go ahead.
It's two invoices that we received that need to be paid by December 1st, or we lose the reimbursement, approximately $10,000, for bulletproof vests, first aid kits, and crisis kits, tourniquets, from TAC.
Oh, it's a TAC one.
That's correct. There's a motion, and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. And item four, discuss possible action to, it says to stow our grant. Any interclaiming motion for that? There's a motion, and a second. Can you please explain to the court what this is?
Correct. Due to the new process and how we're handling the grants, and due to the complexity and timeliness of these two grants, which are also supported by other districts, whether they're PDs or other counties, minus Janice, but the way the money is transferred between counties, including our county, that it's somewhat about a timeliness issue, and the person that will decide this money that we need to move is not the same person who will be doing the change. So in order to remove a level of something that could become a timeliness factor, we would like to replace that with.
Who's doing it now?
Liz.
Debbie. And you want to replace her with?
Liz.
From the sheriff's office.
The sheriff's office, she's the one that's ultimately deciding the timeliness factor and the control, and instead of having another level.
Liz, not Terry. It's Liz.
Correct, it's Liz.
Is there a motion already? Can you include in the motion to also have the sheriff sign off on it? In other words, the way you're stating it right now, Liz can do it on her own.
No, she cannot. When there's four levels, currently she's the writer, the writer does not have the authority to make this number, or the operating agent, which is the judge, or the financial officer, myself, and the project director, which is Miss Esser. And those three are the ones that are allowed to do the changes.
Okay.
Not Miss Esser. Liz can only do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Liz can only do it. Project director can only change, the writer can only do it.
And you're asking that she be able to?
Make the changes.
Make the changes?
Yes.
Who will sign off on it?
Well, we have.
They have checks and balances. Now, you have to sign off before money goes in.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Previously, the way it was done, the judge was certifying, I was a project manager, Liz was a grant writer, and the auditor would submit for reimbursements. That's how it was then. I'd like to see that put back in place. It would expedite what we're trying to do.
Basically, when we created the. Basically, when we created the, when we created the grant, it threw a wrench in the deal.
Yes, sir. So I'd like to see it go back to how it was, at least with the sheriff's office.
But yeah, as you say, she'll still be able to view everything. And if she sees something out of whack or something, then she'll be able to make a comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any more questions? If not, all those.
I just want to ask, Matt, are there any other situations or any other departments that are in the same, in the same dilemma?
There are none that have been that we run into. This is the one that's supporting other entities.
Yeah, Debbie looked into it, and I think that was the only one.
All right, there's a motion, second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, although opposed. Nobody. If nothing else, then this means you're.